It's kinda cool in here, isn't it? Feels good though.
Mumus are on trend, so.
Oh, these books.
About the mumus.
Are they really?
Yeah. That is, yeah.
I'm normally used to.
How did you bring it up?
Nine hundred people in the.
Don't worry. You make it yourself, but it just.
Oh, good idea.
I think I, I think I got it. Uh, yeah.
Is there some in my cabinet?
It's his, his own.
Oh, his own.
Oh, I think yes, I think I complimented you on that dress.
Ninety-five days.
And it's called a nap dress? Okay.
Say you're gonna try this now, you're first to get it started.
What is it?
Okay, yeah.
Thank you.
There's like fourteen.
I just.
Yeah. I can't, I don't know.
I don't know how much you're gonna be talking.
But I can. I can. Okay.
A stash.
I don't think I have enough now.
Well, it looks like there's twenty people.
Fourteen.
With my luck, I'd have thirteen, one short.
Yeah. Ready? Okay. All right, good evening, everybody. I'd like to welcome you to the regular city council meeting of the city of Colleyville, Texas, and it will now come to order on October twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-five at seven oh three P. M., and I will call the roll. Mayor Pro Tim Elder.
Here.
Councilmember Alfonso.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Pro Tim Richardson.
Here.
I'm here, Councilmember Graves.
Here.
Councilmember Gunderson.
Here.
Councilmember Rain.
Here.
Officer Crabtree.
Here.
All right, making sure, I see, I see you back there. All right, cool. All right, so the invocation will be given this evening by the pastor Drew Bridges of Compass Church, and a pledge of allegiance by the city attorney, if you will stand with us, please. Thank you.
All right. Should we bow our heads and pray? Lord Jesus, thank you so much for the people here. God, thank you for the leaders of this amazing town in Colleyville. God, thank you for, um, God, that all of the people that are represented in here today and their families. God, I pray a hedge of protection over their families. I pray a hedge of protection over Colleyville and the business leaders. God, we make, may we make wise decisions, God, to raise up young families here, God, and to see, uh, this town prosper. God, we give you this in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, guys. Okay, I'd like to welcome everyone that's here tonight, and everybody that's watching online. If anybody would like to speak on any of the items, please fill out one of the half cards. When you fill it out, over to my left, the city secretary, Ms. Christine Levin, will take your card. Uh, on your card, make sure you put what letter you'd like, number and letter you'd like to speak about, and if you want to speak or you don't want to speak, if you're for or against it, all that information. If you'll turn that into Ms. Christine. Now, when you approach the mic, just move the mic over to your mouth. You may hear yourself out there, but sometimes we can't hear you up here. So speak into the mic, and we just ask that you'd state your name and your address so that we have it for the record. It's a good go. So if I go through something and you haven't filled out one of those half cards, and you think, man, I'd like to speak about that, I won't close anything out without saying, hey, does anybody want to speak? All you have to do is slip your hand up, I'll call you up, state your name and address, and when you're through, if you would, please fill out that half card and turn it in so that we have it for record. So, pretty easy. All right, so we're gonna move on. We don't have anything in executive session that needs a resolution, so we're gonna move to announcements, proclamations, and presentations. So, uh, I just want to reiterate support for G. C. I. S. D. Recently, recently, I sent the following letter to G. C. I. S. D. President Sean, uh, Shannon Braun, and to the G. C. I. S. D. Board of Trustees, and like to read the letter to you at this time, and it says, President Braun, "The city of Colleyville is blessed with an exceptional school district. The Grapevine-Colleyville Independent School District Board is comprised of a dedicated team of individuals who work very hard on behalf of our community and the other communities served by the district. Presently, the G. C. I. S. D. Board of Trustee has, trustees have undertaken a process to evaluate options related to declining enrollment. Being physically responsible and transparent is always the best approach. Allowing facts to drive the process. Transparent is always the best approach, allowing facts to drive the process. I applaud the inclusion of the citizens and the professional experts in this process. While it seems likely this process will result in school closures across the district, we must trust our duly elected officials and subject experts to guide us in this effort. It is important the community supports G. C. I. S. D.'s effort to address shortfalls in the operating budget and imbalances in facility utilization. Such efforts are necessary to secure the long-term viability of our school district. As city of Colleyville mayor, I empathize with parents who oppose closing their child's school. The bonds formed with our schools and the many wonderful teachers they employ is part of the very fabric of our community. However, I also recognize the board's responsibility, responsibility to provide physically responsible and operationally efficient district operations. Often, such responsibility requires difficult decisions. We must accept in reluctance, there may be school closings in Colleyville. With the decline in student enrollment and millions of recaptured dollars taken from G. C. I. S. D. by the state, we pray the state legislatures will pay attention to this matter and provide additional funding. It's heartbreaking to drive through other towns who take our recaptured dollars and build new extravagant facilities, while G. C. I. S. D. must strategically to simply maintain our aging schools' infrastructure. We join our brethren cities across the district in seeking the return of the thirty-plus million dollars annually back to the district from the state Robin Hood relocation, relocation. While healthy debate and public discussion is an important part of the process, it is important such dialogue take place in a respectful manner. It is also important that we, the leadership of Colleyville, stand strong with our G. C. I. S. D. leadership. Working together is key to bringing about a successful solution that serves the best interest in our taxpayers and students. Thank you for service, for your service to our school district and our city. We stand with you through this challenging time. We are G. C. I. S. D. Sincerely, myself, Mayor Bobby Lindemeyer. Those guys and gals are working hard, and there's, it's gonna be tough, it really is. There's some schools that are gonna, that more than likely will be closed, where they're gonna have to make, you know, declining enrollment. Uh, let's just be honest, nobody, uh, we're not having a whole lot of kids like we used to back in the day, and houses are so expensive, I'm not moving out, I'm an empty nester myself now. Uh, it's just hard to go do those things, and unfortunately, the, the school district, they suffer for it. But you know what? I know that our trustees are very well-versed, they've involved the community, and when the community's involved and they're taking advice from them as well, they're doing the right thing by listening to not only themselves who have done the homework, but also those that are involved from the community. So I do, we, we give our support to those guys and gals over there that are running that. So you have our, we have your back. All right, also, I went out, tried to get some more money for us, you know, and some, you know, some extra money for, from our county commissioner, so I recently went with Deputy Mayor Pro Tim over there, Scotty Richardson, and I attended the coffee that was ho- hosted by Precinct Three Commissioner Matt Kraus. This, the event provided an opportunity to discuss transportation projects like, uh, you know, Cheeks Parker, which we need more funding for, right? We're gonna get it, we're gonna get it, and funding partnerships with the county. We appreciate the time and attention, Commissioner Kraus, affords for our community, and look forward to working with this team on various projects throughout the city. I just want to say thank you to them, Tex Dot, Congresswoman Beth Van Dyne, I know I'm gonna forget half of the people, Tarrant County, um, they've given us millions, we've gone to work, we went out there and we have knocked on doors, beat on doors, and they probably get tired of listening to us, so they pay us a little money to get out of the way, and we'll take every penny they give us, we'll use it wisely, and they know we will, so.
Uh, Mayor for a Day search is open. If you were elected mayor of Colleyville, what would you do? For Colleyville residents in grades one through five, the opportunity exists to find out as part of the city's Mayor for a Day contest. Contestants will submit a one-to-two-page essay about what you would do to make Colleyville the best city in North Texas. Essays are due by Monday, November seventeenth. After careful review, an application will be chosen and the winner announced in December. The winner will serve as honorary mayor at one of the January two thousand and twenty-six city council meetings. The student will spend part of the day meeting with city leaders and touring city facilities, including the Justice Center and the Fire Department. That evening, he or she will attend the co- city council work session to review city business and co-preside over the city council meeting that follows. For more information, visit colleyville.com forward slash M. F. D. Also, early voting is underway. Residents of Tarrant County may early vote in the upcoming joint general and special elections at one of the thirty-five voting locations throughout Tarrant County. For Colleyville residents and those who work in Colleyville, early voting and election day voting will be conducted at N. X. A. at five thousand eight Roberts Road in Colleyville. N. X. A. is located behind the Colleyville Recreation Center. For a list of other Tarrant County voting locations and additional locations for election day, visit www.tarrantcountytech.gov forward slash E. N. forward slash elections dot H. T. M. L. Early voting and election day voting will be conducted as indicated. For questions, call the city secretary's office at eight one seven five zero three one one three zero, or Tarrant County Elections Administration at eight one seven eight three one eight six eight three. And here's the early voting and election day, days and hours. So this week, October twentieth through the twenty-fourth, Monday through Friday, it's eight A. M. to five P. M. October twenty-fifth Saturday is nine A. M. to five P. M. October twenty-sixth Sunday is ten A. M. to three P. M. And October twenty-seventh through the thirty-first, Monday through Friday, seven A. M. to seven P. M. And election day, November fourth, Tuesday, seven A. M. to seven P. M.
Yes, and I just let the council know, I'm going off script, so here I go. But I have a real exciting announcement. Early this evening, during our work session, the city council gave initial approval to move forward on a new Texas tree trail. We still need to vote on some particular funding, but we'll get that done, I think. The trail will be located on nine acres behind the Colleyville Senior Center. The proposed tree trail plan highlights a large variety of Texas trees, over two hundred, actually, and will provide an opportunity to educate trail users with signage, which will provide information on a variety of trees. The Texas Tree Trail will be a destination utilized, enjoyed by all ages for years to come. Then I'd like to move on and. Oh, I can talk about the exhibit too, yeah. So, um, Joe Flynn, if you know him, he's our beautification supervisor, and he did just outstanding job designing and thinking through what a Texas tree trail should be, and he looked at other cities, and there's actually no trail, Texas Tree Trail like this in the state, because he's picked, uh, a large variety of trees that you, you just can't come in one place to see them all, but they're all, uh, approved to grow in this area. But his idea is to have an area for different types of oaks, um, and plant a good number in one round, like five or six, so you get a real good, um, feel for what a grove of trees would be that would be like that. And also include some pathways, um, kinda in the middle, and then at the end, maybe a, a sitting area for picnicking, and even, um, maybe a pollinary, pollinator garden somewhere along the way. But this, uh, project could take three years or more, we're trying to find ways to cut that down, uh, and it's a, it's a big job, uh, to, to do all that. So, anyway, that gives you an idea of what we're trying to do, and I'm so pleased that the city, uh, uh, Tree City USA is trying to do this for the city of Colleyville and for all the generations to come.
Where's it located?
Colleyville, Texas, but it's at the Senior, uh, Center, uh, Colleyville Senior Center. Okay, I also like to talk about, uh, Haunted Trails Return to Colleyville Nature Center. Calling all goblins and ghouls, Haunted Trails is coming back to the Colleyville Nature Center on October thirtieth. Throw on your walking shoes and get ready to be spooked. Zombies, witches, and clowns, oh my, will roam the trails waiting to greet you as you walk by. The nature center will open at six thirty P. M. and have food trucks, a D. J., and treats for all. From seven P. M. to eight thirty P. M., we will allow those who think they are brave enough to embark on the haunted trail. Unlike previous years, the rendition of haunted trails will be more trick than treat. Because we are catering, catering this event to the older crowd, we are recommending it for pre-teens and older. If you think you have what it takes to face our spooky friends, we'll see you on October thirtieth.
Scotty, are you surprised that I wasn't reading that one?
He actually said that you should reread that.
Yeah. Oh, my.
Uh-huh. I'm gonna need a little more than that.
You notice I keep getting that one too, Ben, you're stuck with, I'm stuck with.
The D. E. National Takeback Day is October twenty-fifth. The Colleyville Police Department and the Drug Enforcement Agency, the Drug Enforcement Agency Administration will give the public the opportunity to prevent pill abuse and theft by ridding their homes of potentially dangerous, expired, unused, and unwanted prescription drugs. Community members can bring their pills for disposal to the Colleyville Justice Center, five two zero one Riverwalk Drive, Saturday, October twenty-fifth, between the hours of ten A. M. and two P. M. The D. E. A. cannot accept liquids, needles, or sharps, only pills or patches. The service is free and anonymous, no questions asked. Colleyville Police are offering a drive-through service for easier drug disposal.
Okay, the citizen survey is live. Colleyville residents can now help shape the city by taking a survey that measures their attitudes towards a wide, wide range of city services and priorities. The city of Colleyville releases a resident survey every few years to provide an additional avenue for residents' opinions and perspectives to guide the city's plans and actions. The citizen survey will not only help city leadership gauge how the city is performing, it will play a critical role in determining future city programs and initiatives. The survey went live in October one and will be open through November seventeenth. We encourage every resident to take a few minutes to complete the online survey at colleyville.com slash survey. Answers will be anonymous and results will be tabulated by a third party. Up to two surveys may be submitted per household.
Glade Road Rehabilitation Project, November third through the fifth. The city, in partnership with Tarrant County, is undertaking a pavement rehabilitation project to surf, resurface the asphalt road surface along Glade Road from the Pool Jackson Roundabout to Strathmore Terrace. This section of roadway will be reduced to one lane during the hours of seven A. M. and four P. M., November third through the fifth, weather permitting. Please drive with caution, watch for traffic signs and flaggers, and allow extra travel time. This essential maintenance will lead to a smoother and safer ride and reduce the long-term costs by delaying the need for a complete street replacement. Thank you, Tarrant County, for assisting Colleyville in this street repair. Our taxpayers save by utilizing Tarrant County's road crew.
The extra attention provided by the park staff is starting to show at baseball fields, softball, and soccer fields around town. Thanks to our parks team, the fields are getting noticed this, this fall. The extra attention and treatment has vastly improved the look of fields with one resident taking time to share the note below. As a Colleyville resident, a Colleyville Soccer Association Board member, and a dad and coach to my two daughters and two soccer teams since two thousand and twenty, I wanted to say thank you. The Pleasant Run Game Fields are in, in the best condition I've ever seen, they are in better condition than all the other associations we have played at, and it doesn't go unnoticed. I appreciate your focus and attention on the fields, thank you, Mr. Glenn Van Plarkum.
All right, cool, anything else? All right, well, we're gonna go down, we're gonna do some fun stuff at the Garden Club, so, council, why don't y'all join me down there? Let's go. Let's go down front. You guys, come on down. Yeah, come on, we'll squeeze up here, bring all the people you want. I know y'all like being on camera. Come on in front, yeah, up front. As a matter of fact, council, will you pass these out? You guys take some. I might have enough. These are, uh, a little token to you guys that are, are challenge coins for the city, and, uh, we wanted to make sure that, for all the hard work that you guys do, that you get a little something from us. You guys are bringing us, yeah, we'll get you one, we'll definitely get you one, I promise. Did you get one, Carmen? Okay, cool. Okay, need one more? Oh, you did? Okay, cool, we had plenty. All right, so you, you ready? You need one too? Yeah, are you coming down? Okay, I thought you were coming down too.
Are you with the Garden Club?
Are you with the Garden Club? No? Oh, well, come on down anyways. Let me just say this, anybody else wanna come down here with us? It's okay. Lisa, come on. Are you sure? All right, all right. Pastor, you might wanna pray over this group, I see how, they're getting rowdy already, I see how they are. All right, well, I'm gonna turn this over to the Garden Club president, Ms. Janet Sudemire, go, take it away.
Hello to all from Colleyville Garden Club. My name is Janet Sudemire, I'm the president of our wonderful club. We got started in nineteen sixty-one with the mission of promoting interest in community beautification. Currently, we have a five-year committee that has been working with city employees, Lisa Escobida and Joe Flynn. We are thrilled to be able to fund the beautiful garden that Joe has designed. These five-year committee members are Desiree Hirschen, Uma Lau, Karma De Alexander, Anne Morgan, Mary Ann Nicholson, and Nancy Harding. Can y'all raise your hand? Yay, thank you for your hard work. This project is a large expansion to the seating area at the Colleyville Center that the Colleyville Garden Club has voluntarily helped to take care of for the last few years. The new garden will be a wonderful addition to the small seating area. This money is the culmination of many years of hard work from our volunteers and from our plant sales, which the city has so generously contributed sponsorship and support. Our club is proud to present you our check. Who gets the check?
Yes, I do. I'm just kidding, just kidding, just kidding, I was back in my Irving days.
This check is for thirty-two thousand dollars, thirty-two thousand eight hundred dollars.
Wow, it felt heavy, thank you so much. Holy moly. We, we, we really appreciate it, come on, you, turn around so the camera can see you now too, as well, yep, right there. Why, yeah, there you go, well, thank you guys so much, we appreciate that, that's a shocker, I mean, really, truly, what a big amount, and you know what? We're so proud to have the Garden Club and all that you do around the town, we talk about it all the time, and the, uh, you know, my wife bought, I don't know how many da- daisies? Is that what we're buying? Daffodils! I knew I was gonna get it wrong. Daffodils, I think my whole yard's gonna be a daffodil. So anyways, but thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for all that you do for the city of Colleyville and everything, I promise we'll put it to good use, you betcha. Thank you so much, Janet. Okay, hang on, we're gonna try to squeeze real tight and get a picture. Come on, Lisa. All right, everybody squeeze in. Everybody's gotta go this way, how about this? I'll stand over here with my Lisa. We've been talking about getting rid of that thing out of the middle a couple times already. We don't wanna, we don't wanna brag on Lisa too much, 'cause somebody will try to hire us, and she's not for her right now.
Seriously? I don't think anyone's buying it, no.
No, I did not hear about that.
Yeah, it was on eBay. On eBay? Oh, my gosh. How did you, who alerted you to that? That's awesome. Somebody said, I thought it was one of you, but I guess not. Wouldn't be, but I mean, that's hilarious. I probably would have bought it. I would have bought it. If you search on eBay, Colleyville Challenge Coin, it'll pop up, it wasn't Bobby, I don't think.
Okay.
If you look on eBay for Colleyville Challenge Coin, there's one for the mayor, the mayor's coin down there too. Really?
I will give this to, thank you.
I started to run, but Crabtree would have caught me. She's faster than I am, I got two bomb knees.
Okay, that was fun. Thank you, Garden Club, we appreciate you so much. All right, so we're going to a consent reading and public hearing of Resolution R. dash two five five zero eight four, this is agenda item number four. Approving a city, uh, council action under the consent items at the regular city council meeting of October twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-five, whereas the city council has taken action on certain items on the agenda under consent items, now therefore be resolved by the city council of the city of Colleyville, Texas. Section one, that the agenda decisions approved by the city council action under consent items as follows are hereby adopted. A, approval of the minutes of the regular city council meeting of October eighth, two thousand and twenty-five. B, approval of a construction services agreement with Smith Lawn and Tree, L. L. C., in the amount not to exceed eighty-one thousand seven hundred and eighty-five dollars for the south parking landscaping and tree planting, and authorizing the city manager to execute the agreement. C, approval of purchase-sell agreement with C. D. C. Equities, L. L. C., for the purchase of the city-owned three point eight one acres at seven zero one five Colleyville Boulevard, and authorizing the city. 3.81 acres at 7015 Colleyville Boulevard, and authorizing the city manager to execute the agreement. And now it is so resolved. Okay, so any questions over the last meeting? Nope? Okay, so we're gonna move on to that special person out there, Ms. Lisa Escobido, facing many jobs. You got it, girl.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Lisa Escobido, Director of Parks and Recreation. And this evening, this consent item is the beautification of the south parking lot project. It consists of installing trees and irrigation on the south berm of the south parking lot in between Heroes Park and Walmart. These trees consist of 200-gallon live oaks, which are the larger and more substantial trees, in addition to vitex, Savannah Hollies, and Yopons. So they will be dispersed throughout the berm as seen in this picture. The beautification of this area will help accent the beautification that is taking place in Heroes Park, just adjacent to the berm. And so, staff has received numerous quotes for this project from various contractors, and Smith Lawn &amp; Tree did provide the lowest proposal. Any questions?
I think that's gonna be really cool, really, we're beautifying the town and just adding that back there on the backside of the park and that parking lot between Walmart. That's gonna look really, really good. Good job. I think it's fantastic. Anybody else have any comments? Okay, we're gonna go to the next one, Mr. Mark Wood, Assistant City Manager.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. This item is for approval of purchase-sell agreement for the almost four-acre property the city owns at the southeast corner of State Highway 26 and John McCain. If you recall, back in 2020, the city purchased this parcel for $1.5 million or $9 a square foot. The purchase was made via our TIF, our Tax Increment Financing District. In addition, around the same time, we purchased the 37 acres on the west side. You can see in this picture, the four acres we're talking about is shaded in red, and the city also owns the 37 acres across the street from that. As you know, we're under contract on the west side for the resort hotel development. And then, if this is approved tonight, we'll be under contract for what's gonna be a luxury garage suite product, along with offices and a restaurant. The purchaser, CDC Equities, plans to develop garages of America, as well as an office component and restaurants as well with outdoor seating. This is kind of the first step, or second step. The first step was executed in September of this year with a letter of interest the council approved. And then now what follows is the purchase-sell agreement. If this is approved tonight, we'll be under contract for 180 days with CDC Equities. During that time, they will come forward through staff and Ben's group, the normal planning and zoning, and the city council process for zoning. So this doesn't mean the project is approved or going through tonight, it's just for the purchase of the land. It's contingent upon the zoning that's granted by this city council. And so, normally, we would not be involved this early in the process, but because we're the landowner, also the zoning approver, then that's why we're involved this early in the process. So, as I mentioned, it is for purchase of four acres at $15 a square foot for a total purchase price of $2,488,800. We purchased it again for $9 a square foot, or $1.5 million back in 2020, and it is contingent upon those zoning entitlements by this body.
Okay. That's wonderful. I'd like to see a return like that. That's pretty good in five years. Anybody else have any questions?
I just had a question in previous discussions about this purchaser. Are they gonna work in conjunction with us to buy the other parts? Aren't they purchasing more land than the four acres we're selling? They're gonna butt up to us again and buy, was it seven more?
So they're gonna, they're looking at going under contract with this parcel right here as well. And my understanding is that has already been executed, that purchase-sell agreement, and so they're under contract for that as well. So it'll be combined with ours. And that in total would come to the city council for zoning approval.
And just, so, you wanna, you wanna go ahead?
No, I just remembered, maybe they had talked about a small car museum too? Is that still?
Yes.
That'd be kinda...
Yes, that's part of it as well. Yes, sir.
And I think honestly, or I'd say, the concept that they kind of brought forward so that everybody kinda has the idea, the garages were a little more towards the back, and then the restaurant and the outdoor seating and stuff would be more towards the front of the highway. So, those concepts will come later on, should this be approved tonight. Okay, any other questions? All right, thank you, Mark. With that being said, I am gonna open a public hearing. Public hearing is open. We have no cards. Would anybody like to speak? See, nobody wishes to speak, so I'm gonna close the public hearing. I'll need a motion in a second.
Motion that we adopt resolution R-25-5084.
Second.
Okay, I got a motion by Councilman Graves and a second by Councilwoman Gunderson. Motion has been approved, 7-0. Next up, Ms. Cassie, I think you've got it for the monthly financial report.
Good evening. This is for the September report. This is the last of our fiscal year for fiscal year '25. Just keep in mind, the numbers for fiscal year '24 that are in here as a comparison are with the audit already done. We have not had the audit completed yet for this year, so they're more of a cash basis. So you'll see some differences, but we'll have auditors coming in next month, and then we'll have those numbers complete. So, general fund, we are at over 100% of our budget for our revenues and almost right there for expenditures, but that just means we had a really good budget. So, looking healthy. Property taxes, again, are right there at just under 100% at 99.68. Sales tax, again, collections are two months in the lag, so this collections for October, we'll have one more to complete our September sales that will also be accrued back. So, we were down a little bit when you compare month to month for those October collections. Then, but overall, we're still at 4.34 overall. So, we're looking still, still healthy with our sales tax.
Yep, good.
So, again, just comparative chart, when we're looking at what our surrounding communities are doing, we were down again a little bit, just 1.34. Some of our others had more significant change, but when we do look at that year-to-date, we're still up and looking quite healthy. So, utilities, still in line.
Could you go back one more?
Sure.
Yeah. I'd just like to point out, can I write on that? I don't think I can. Where we, it says payment year-to-date, and you could look at the total amount, which is almost $7 million for Colleyville, but you look at the other cities, I mean, the next lowest one is Bedford, which is almost twice as much sales tax. And I guess my point is, look at what all we do with our tax money as far as improvements to the infrastructure, the roads, the parks, the beautification, and we still have, for five years for our capital improvement, we're paying cash. So, we're a smaller city, we collect smaller revenue from sales tax, but we do a lot with it, and I think financially, we're, a lot of these other cities have large bonds that they're paying off, and we have one large one for...
And they also have large shopping areas too, so, which makes a difference.
By design, you know, we're a more rural community, which we love, but the point is with the taxes, we do a lot with what we get, and we don't have as much to work with as some other cities.
And our last bond will pay off in 2027?
That's right. Getting closer. So, again, utilities fund, right there on target with our budget. The drainage fund, again, right there, we'll, it'll, you know, those numbers will kind of even out with what we look like with fiscal year '24, once we get the audit completed. The hotel occupancy tax fund, I just wanted to point out, we had not received the September quarter-end payment. That's why the revenues look so low. We're estimating that to be around $50,000. That's what we've been averaging with those quarterly payments, so that'd put us at like 90% of the budget. So, it looks really bad when you have a lot of negatives, but it's not as bad as it appears at the moment.
We need some heads and beds.
We do. So, debt service, right there, 100%, with where we were expecting for the budget. And that's the end of that report. Any questions or other questions?
We're healthy. We're doing really well.
We are.
That's good. Colleyville is blessed.
So, now we just get through the audit. We're good.
All right, thank you, Ms. Cassie. Appreciate it. All right, so we're gonna go to 6A, which is a second reading in public hearing of ordinance An ordinance amending the ordinance of 0-12-1858 concerning tax increment investment zone number one. City of Colleyville, Texas established pursuant to chapter 311 of the Texas Tax Code by expanding the boundaries and extending the term of the tax increment financing reinvestment zone number one, city of Colleyville, Texas. All right, Assistant City Manager, Mark Wood, and then Ms. Natalie Ayala, right? Did I say that correctly? Gotcha.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. This is the second reading tonight of this item, and this is the fourth time we've discussed it, two at a work session and two at regular meetings. So, as you mentioned, Mayor Natalie Ayala is here, who's our TIF consultant, along with David Pettit. And so, we'll kind of go quickly through the slides again that we just, she went through last time. But again, this item is to look at extending the TIF and also expanding the boundaries of the TIF. We do that for two reasons. Number one, the TIF has been a very important financing tool for the city over the years. It's been a very healthy TIF. We've been able to fund a lot of infrastructure projects. All of our economic development successes have come through the TIF. Road projects, Heroes Park, beautification throughout the city. The TIF has been instrumental in helping the city to accomplish a lot of those goals. And so, we would extend the city's portion of the TIF for 25 years if this is approved, so through 2055. Also, at the same time, we would expand some of the boundaries so that we can not only gain some additional increment of tax revenue, but also do projects within those boundaries as well. So some of the boundaries are like city properties, the rec center, city park, they're not gonna contribute revenue to the TIF, but we can do projects within those boundaries if the boundaries are expanded. So, that's the reason for not just expanding the year, but also expanding some of the boundaries. So, but I'd like to hand it off to Natalie, kind of walk us through that process.
Thank you, Mark. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thanks for having me. As you mentioned, my name is Natalie Ayala with Pettit and Ayala Consulting out of Fort Worth, and we've been serving as the city's TIF consultant for some time. Just for the benefit of the public, I do always like to point out, what are we talking about when we're talking about TIF or TIRS? Those terms are used interchangeably. The tax increment reinvestment zones do not represent a new tax on property, rather, it's a redirection of future incremental tax revenue, a portion of it going to the tax increment reinvestment zone. In this case, the city is participating at 100%, but any of the base year taxes will continue to flow to the taxing entity. So, at the time of creation or expansion in this case, whatever the city is currently collecting to the general fund from those properties will continue to flow. We're only talking about future increases. Those future tax revenues will be redirected into the TIRS, which means that they need to be spent within the boundaries of the zone. To give a little bit of history over the TIRS, and I'll move through this quickly, but it was created in 1998 and then expanded in 2012. It currently is scheduled to expire on December 31st, 2030. The city of Colleyville is participating at 100% of its real property increment, Tarrant County College, and is also participating at 100% of its increment through 2030. Tarrant County and the hospital district were participating until they hit their cap. GCISD is contributing, again, only until 2030. So for the expansion and the extension at this time, we're only speaking about the city of Colleyville. So we are expanding the boundaries. Every time the TIRS is expanded, it sets a new base year. So if you choose to move forward with approving this ordinance tonight, then you will have what is considered TIRS 1B. The only thing that that means is that the expanded boundaries will have a 2025 base year. But any increment collected within the TIRS 1B can be spent in TIRS 1A or the original. It's all one fund. The only reason that we even give it a separate designation is, again, because it has a different base year. We will extend the term, so as I mentioned, it's currently scheduled to expire 2030. We're extending it to expire in December 2055. There's no change to the city participation. The city will continue to contribute at 100% of its increment. Discussions with the college are ongoing, but GCISD's participation will end 2030. As part of this, we do amend the project and financing plan, so there's a preliminary project and financing plan attached to the ordinance as Exhibit C. These are the boundaries. So everything in red is what was originally created, TIRS 1, TIRS 1A, the 2012 expansion is in pink, and then in blue is 1B. As you can see, what looks like maybe it just might be a line is actually capturing either side of major corridors, major roads, to allow for improvements to be made to those roads at a future date if the city so chooses. As part of amending the project and financing plan, we revisit the development projections. We anticipate that throughout those three different areas, the original boundaries, 1A, 1B, there will be a variety of uses. We do anticipate some heads and beds there with some hotel units, retail, QSR, quick service retail, that's your Chick-fil-A's, your Starbucks. We anticipate quite a bit of that, some office industrial, and then some senior living. What this really just kind of tells you is that, given the scope of the boundaries, there is going to be a mix of uses. The projection includes development to occur between 2026 and 2034, so we didn't project all the way out to that 2055, just because, you know, as my partner likes to say, after 10, 15 years, our crystal ball gets really, really fuzzy. So, it's going to probably need to be amended again in about 10 years, once you kind of see what development has actually occurred and what's on the horizon for the city. So the 2035 new development taxable value is estimated at $344 million. That generates, based again on the city's participation through the end of the term, the college and the ISD just through 2030, of about $148 million in TIRS revenue through the end of that 2055 term. What would that $148 million potentially be spent on? We allocate it to a menu of eligible project costs. These are the categories that are allowed by statute, chapter 311. They're meant to be estimates and may be revised. So again, 2055 is a long time from now. If in 2050, you anticipate spending more than $51 million on roadway improvements, you're able to take money from one of those categories and put it into that, as long as you don't exceed that $147.7 million. If you do want to exceed that amount, then you would need to amend the plan, and that does require a public hearing. Any allocations from the TIRS would require first going to the TIRS board and then city council. I do always like to point out as well that just because somebody is investing money within the TIRS or making public improvements, they are not guaranteed reimbursement for those investments by right. So even if you're investing in the TIRS and doing some roadway improvements, you still have to go to the TIRS board and city council before you get any money out of the fund. So next steps, the first reading in the public hearing was October 8th. Today, we're having the second reading. Next would be going to the TIRS board and city council, and then a second reading to approve that project and financing plan on November 18th. Once the project and financing plan has been approved, then you're free to enter into any development agreements with underneath that plan. Be happy to take any questions.
I think this is a great thing. It's done a lot of great things for our city. It's allowed us to do so many things. These dollars can only specifically used on certain specific projects. There's the little bit, I explained this a little bit last time, a little bit of confusion where this money can be spent. People want to know if we can do it with here or there, but inside those lines that you had given us, there's specific areas that we can use that, but like the TIF is so far funded, like the towers, Heroes Park, 26 beautification, the best grant for businesses, the gift card program, and so many other things. It's such a wonderful way for this to pump right back into our economy and keep our businesses flowing and our streets and everything improved. So, I think this is a great thing that we're doing right now, extending this. Anybody else? Okay. That being said, thank you so much, Natalie.
Thank you.
I am going to open a public hearing. A public hearing is now open. Would anybody like to speak? See, nobody wishes to speak, so I'm gonna close a public hearing. I need a motion in a second.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance O-25-2347.
Second. Okay, I got a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Elder and a second by Councilmember Ray. Okay, I got a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Elder and a second by Councilmember Ray. Motion passes seven zero. Thank you so much. We appreciate your help. All right, this is a second reading in public hearing of ordinance zero dash two five dash two three four eight. Amending the zoning lot for, the zoning for lot two A, block six R, Woodbrier Estates West Edition, located at three eight one one, Colleyville Boulevard, while authorizing a special use permit for a dog boarding facility, providing a penalty of fine not to exceed the sum of $2,000, and providing an effective date. All right, we went over this last time.
Yes.
That's good information there. Mr. Big Ben.
Thank you. Ben Briner, Director of Community Development. As you stated, this is a special use permit request for a dog boarding use at 3811 Colleyville Boulevard. This is just south of the Cheeks Barger Road intersection with Colleyville Boulevard. It is currently zoned CC three, which is our highway commercial district, and it is designated as part of the Colleyville Boulevard corridor. Here's some different photos of the, aerial photos of the property. So this is a multi-tenant building. They will be occupying a portion of this building if approved. It'd be the south side or the right side. And this is the floor plan that was provided to us. They will also have an outdoor run area to allow for the dogs to get outside a little bit, or the pets. There was some question about the kennels, and I did add this. This does show the, a concept of how the kennels could be set up within that area. And specifically dealing with the outdoor area, this will be for not only exercise, but also relief. And so they do have a plan to put, it's a, an area that they will have synthetic grass, but it also has some drainage within the, that area so that it will be able to be collected and then redirected back into the building to go into the sanitary sewer system. And then they also have the eight-foot wood fence that will be stained as well. So none of that, that dog waste should get into the parking lot. It will all be collected and properly disposed of in the sanitary sewer system. This is the proposed language for the ordinance itself, so it would be for preppy pet and as consistent, generally consistent with the floor plan as depicted on the exhibit, to include the screening and relief plan. We did send our notices out to surrounding property owners. We received three responses back, all in opposition. Two for adjacent property owners, one for an adjacent tenant within the building. The opposition calculated is 25.43%. I believe based on a new state law, that does not trigger the supermajority as previously thought. I think that was raised up to a 60% threshold, so it does not trigger the supermajority. Staff is neutral on this request. The Planning Zoning Commission did recommend approval at their September 8th meeting by a vote of six to zero.
Okay. We kind of, like I say, we kind of waded through this. Any questions for?
I do have one question, Ben. Can you go back to the slide that showed the drainage?
Yeah.
So in this picture, there's multiple views of that fence. Is the smooth side going to be out or in? See, you got, it looks out on the top right and it, and then, and the second one, but the, it looks like the smooth side's out on the bottom one. That would be of interest to me, just to what it look, one, people can climb over it if the, you know, on the, if the smooth side's in, but also just what it looks like from the property behind it. And as you're driving to the, you know, how it kind of is on the end cap, I would be interested to know if the fence is going to be the pretty side out.
The applicants are here. They can answer that.
That would be my only question.
But I think you can also require that the finish side be on the outside.
My opinion would be that it's required that it's the smooth side out, if they're not opposed to it. Just because that is an end cap building and your people are going to be seeing it from all sides.
Hey, Ben, before you go, could you bring back that overhead of the lots that?
Of the opposition?
Yeah, right.
Oh, this is work?
Yeah, is this just below, is that a childcare facility, daycare? I can't mark it.
Right.
Oh, over here, yeah.
Yes, a daycare facility.
Okay.
Same building here.
Okay. And this is the, this is the O 99 cent store.
That's correct.
Okay, okay. Just trying to get my bearings. Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Any questions for the applicant?
Would, would you guys be okay with putting the?
We're fine with the, the smooth side being on outside. That would be, yeah.
Safe anyway, so nobody could crawl over it.
Yeah.
I just got a few questions.
Sure.
I think you said this before. Is this your first facility, a boarding, dog boarding facility? Do you have any other? The reason I ask is sometimes I know there was a liquor store that we wanted to see previous buildings to see what it looked like and just to see how well it worked. But I don't think in this case you have, this is your first.
So this is our first facility, but this is a franchise that we purchased. We purchased a franchise, and then there's other facilities. The facilities that they do have, there are some in Texas and Houston. There's some in Oklahoma, Washington, Florida is the main office, some other spots. But there, there is a wide range of these. I think they have 26 facilities altogether. So it has been a really good franchise, and that's the reason why we picked it. Me personally, I've worked at kennels my younger years. I worked at a no-kill shelter, so I'm used to kennels. I also worked at the Audubon Zoo, which I'm from New Orleans, so I was able to work at the zoo. So I'm very familiar with animals and pets and things of that nature. So this is like one of the biggest dreams of mine I've ever had, so I'm like praying.
Well, appreciate that. I'm glad you brought up it was a franchise of 26 other locations. I'm sure that will help start up. And then I just want to make sure, and it may have been stated before, but how often do you treat the exterior areas? Because I'm concerned about summer heats radiate, you know, the smells and things. How often do you treat the outside?
So since it has a drainage system, we would expect to treat the, treat the area daily, like spray it down daily. There is medical, safe medical grade chemicals that the franchise uses that we have to use to clean that area. So it, it will be done daily.
Okay, and just one more time, that exterior cleaning, does it go into the sanitation system? Is there, how's it collected up for the exterior?
So the, the landlord, landlord has said that he's going to kind of smooth the concrete, concrete there out on a slope and then add a drainage system that'll feed back into the plumbing, the. Sanitary system, yes. And it'll, it'll clear out that way.
Thanks, that makes sense. Jerry, is that something the city would kind of make sure the drainage is correct on that?
Yeah, that'd be part of their build-out permit.
Okay. And just one more question, and these are important, so thank you for answering these.
You're welcome.
How often is the waste picked up for removal from the property? Is there a bin outside, or how often is it picked up?
There is not, there's not a bin outside, so the waste is removed by, it's basically poop scooped and it is triple-bagged, tied up, and then there's something else that the company wants us to do, but we don't know that completely yet because it's.
Proprietary.
Yeah.
But how often is it picked up? I mean, to remove from the location, is it once a week, or, I mean, you have to get rid of it, right?
Right. That, I'm not, I'm not sure. There's probably going to be a waste pickup for, like, there's companies that you can have, like dog, companies that come and do poop scoop. We don't poop scoop the poop ourselves, but there's people that pick up waste.
But the waste will be inside stored and then?
The waste will be in, in, yeah. It'll be stored in containers.
Okay, well, thank you. I wanted to make sure I was clear, and it's pretty important for the other businesses surrounding and the school behind. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, anybody else? Good questions? Thanks, Scotty. Okay, well, with that being said, we're going to open a public hearing real quick. All right, we need to open a public hearing. Would anybody like to speak? A public hearing is open. Would anybody like to speak? See, nobody wishes to speak, so I'm going to close a public hearing. I'll need a motion and a second of what you want to do. I'll tell you what, I'll make a motion of approval for ordinance zero dash two five dash two three four eight.
I'll second.
All right, so I got a motion by myself and a second by Councilman Graves. There it goes. Motion passes seven zero. Welcome to Colleyville. Good luck.
Thank you for your investment in our community as well.
Thank you. We appreciate it. All right, so this one, we're going to go to six C, which is a second reading in public hearing of ordinance zero dash two five dash two three four nine. Amending the zoning for lot 13R, block two of the Thompson Terrace subdivision located at five two zero one, Colleyville Boulevard, by authorizing a special use permit for the sale of alcoholic beverages for on-premises consumption, providing a penalty of fine not to exceed the sum of $2,000, and providing an effective date. All right, Big Ben, take it away.
All right, thank you. So this special use permit request is for alcoholic beverage sales for on-premises consumption at 5201 Colleyville Boulevard. Here's the aerial photo of the property at Colleyville Boulevard and Thompson Terrace. It is currently zoned CC one, which is our village retail district, and it is also designated as part of the Colleyville Boulevard corridor. Here's some different perspectives of the property. This is the Stone House Restaurant. And the reason coming before the city council is that there has been a change in ownership, and part of the language in the ordinances states specifically that if there is a change in ownership, that it would require a new special use permit. So the first ordinance was approved in 2019, and then there was a change of ownership in 2022, and then this is the, the next change of ownership. One thing that we thought would be appropriate in this case is in letter D, one D, we did take out that specific language as far as a change of ownership, but everything else remains the same. It is for the Stone House Restaurant, and all of these other conditions are just carried over from the previous ordinances. We did send our notices out to surrounding property owners, did not receive any responses back for this item. Staff recommends approval, as does the Planning Zoning Commission. They voted six to zero at their September 8th meeting. I can ask you any questions?
Anybody questions for Ben? No? Okay, so is the applicant here by chance? Ms. Lisa? Are you guys the ones that's purchasing? Come on up. So I, just real quick while they're coming down, I just want to say, you've been an icon. Thanks for doing Stone House. Thanks for all that you've done for the community. It's been a pleasure. You, you got, when people talk about Colleyville, they talk about Stone House, and that's because of you, Lisa. You and Paul, y'all started that from the get-go, and so proud to, to call Stone House our corner market right there because everybody comes down for Stone House, and what a fabulous place, and you have done such a fabulous thing.
Well, I thank you, but it's, it's been a great partnership. So I was looking at the board. There's two, two that were on the board from the get-go. I believe, Brandy, you were there when we started this, and Mayor, you were as well. I've seen all of y'all in the restaurant. It's been a great journey. It's a bittersweet night for me. I will, I will say that. But I'm handing it off to two wonderful people. Residents of Colleyville, well, I just moved, but that was before they bought it.
We'll let you slide on that one.
So Brian and Christie, they're going to be your majority owners, so.
Okay.
I am, I'm excited that they're going to take over. I know Paul's excited. I went and talked to Paul before I did this, and I was sitting there talking to him, and I said, if you have any issue with me selling, speak now. If don't, don't say anything. He didn't say anything. So here we are.
If he did.
It'd be a good, it'd be a different day if he spoke. So, but do, thank you for the city, and I know the city will continue to support Brian and Christie and Stone House. And I just pray that they have great success and will continue the, what Paul and I, what I began. So thank you all.
Brian and Christie, Bob, we got you up here. You might as well introduce yourself and give a shameless plug or two about what you just bought.
Sure. Brian and Christie Hendershot. Our, our biggest challenge so far from the last meeting is we got to move up on the ranking of the redemptions of the coupons.
That's right.
I think we were 10 out of 10.
I can tell you that it wasn't because of us.
So no, we're very excited about it. You know, we were doing the books for, for Stone House for a couple of years, and I've come to know Lisa and Greg, and for us, it was a very easy decision. Other than, we had moved three weeks before she made the offer to us. We're still in Fort Worth, still in Tarrant County. But I've been in Colleyville since 1999, so we love Colleyville, love the restaurant, love the concept, love the people.
Well, I could tell you, just everybody up here loves Stone House. We all, just what a fabulous place.
Yeah, yeah, we're out of path.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, there's nothing like it.
Yeah, we agree.
In fact, I think we'll be there this Thursday.
Thursday, exactly. Yes, sir.
That's going to be a good night.
It will be a good night.
Absolutely.
Anybody got any questions or comments? Well, welcome, Brian and Christie. We are so glad that you're here, and you're taking over from a sweet lady right there.
Absolutely. Thank you so much, and we'll see you Thursday.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, so with that being said, I have to open a public hearing. A public hearing is now open. Would anybody like to speak? See, nobody wishes to speak, so I'm going to close the public hearing. I need a motion and a second, please.
Motion to approve ordinance O dash two five dash two three four nine.
She doesn't want to do it now.
Let you second last time. I've been waiting. It's my turn.
Second.
Fight, fight break not appear.
I know, it should have.
I just can't get to it quick enough.
I got a motion by Councilmember Alfonso and a second by Councilmember. Motion is approved seven zero. Welcome, Brian and Christie. Thank you for.
Thank you, guys.
By the Stone House. Love you, Lisa. We'll see you guys on Thursday. All right, so this is six D, a second reading in public hearing of ordinance zero dash two five dash two three five zero. Amending the zoning for lot one four R of the Pecan Park Estates located at five nine one two, Ponderosa Street, by authorizing a special use permit to allow for an accessory building to exceed the maximum lot coverage, providing a penalty of fine not to exceed the sum of $2,000, and providing an effective date. All right, Ben, this is all you, buddy.
Yep, thank you. This is another special use permit request, this one for an accessory building at 5912 Ponderosa Street. Here's an aerial map of the property. It is fairly close to Colleyville Boulevard, but in the, in the subdivision there. It is currently zoned R 15, which is our single-family residential district. It is designated for residential use on our future land use map. So here's some different aerial photos of the property. This doesn't show everything, but they recently received a permit to add a shade structure to the backside of the pool. They are now asking for a second accessory building at the end of the driveway. And I've got some images that will show that. This is just a street view of the house. These are the standards for the R 15 district, so they do comply with all of our regulations, except for the maximum accessory building size, which we regulate at 4%. They're requesting to exceed that up to 5.1%. And so that is based on the two buildings added together. So 4% of the lot, which is 15,823 square feet, would calculate to 633 square feet. The patio, the shade structure that was permitted, it was permitted at 467 square feet. This new proposed structure is 336 square feet, so that's 803 square feet total, which calculates to 5.1% of the lot. To go over the 4% number, that does require a special use permit approval by the city council.
Okay.
So this is the, the new location or the location for the new building. It does comply with our setback requirements and our height requirements. That is a, a storage shed type structure, so again, it's just to add some additional space for, I'm sure a lot of their lawn equipment or other things there on the property. Just some other images if we need to get to it. This is the proposed language, so it is for the new 336-square-foot detached structure, which together with the other structure would exceed the 4% number. We did send notices out to surrounding property owners, did not receive any responses back for this item. Staff does recommend approval, as does the Planning Zoning Commission. They voted six to zero at their September 8th meeting. I can ask you any questions?
Any questions for Ben? We, we actually had been talking about, we said it last time, that we're talking about revamping this a little bit on the, how many square feet we could use and the pervious and impervious. So this would fall right, actually right in line with that new proposal that we're doing, correct?
This one's still, the accessory structures would still be slightly above, but in essence, this is what we're talking about.
So, I mean, we haven't passed it yet, but it's something that we are discussing, something like this. So anyways, any comments that you have, guys have? Hey, Ben, before you leave, you know, I just want to tell you, we always brag on everybody else and Lisa because she takes all the accolades. She has so many jobs and wears so many hats, but Ben, you do such an awesome job for the city.
Yes.
And we really appreciate you. You're here late all the time with us. You work your tail end off, and we just don't tell you thank you enough, so I'm going to take this opportunity to say thank you, Ben, for all that you do for us.
Thank you.
And we hope you never leave, because if you do, I'm a pretty good-sized boy, I'm going to have to wrestle you down and keep you around. But thank you, Ben, for all that you do.
It's not as sexy as what she does, but thank you, I appreciate it.
I don't know with that blue jacket on. You're hot, I'm cold. I got you there, brother.
Yeah, thank you, Ben.
Thank you, Ben.
Yep. All right, so with that being said, I have to open a public hearing. A public hearing is now open. Would anybody like to speak? See, nobody wishes to speak, so I'm going to close the public hearing. Any other discussion you guys want, or I need a motion and a second?
Go ahead, Kimberly.
Go ahead, Kimberly.
Chance Kimber.
I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance zero-two-five-two-three-five-zero.
Second.
All right, I got a motion by Councilwoman Gunderson and a second by. All right. Ben through. Speaking of Lisa Escobedo. Did you write this? This is long. Thanks a lot. It's not too bad. I've had a long.
Text dot.
Yeah, text dot. All right, this is seven A, which is a resolutions, resolutions, reading and public hearing, resolution R dash two-five dash five-zero-eight-five, approving an advanced funding agreement with the Texas Department of Transportation for the green ribbon funding for the landscaping as identified in Exhibit A, providing for local funding from the tax increment chi financing, TIF, district fund, and authorizing the city manager to execute the agreement, whereas the city of Colleyville, city of Colleyville submitted a request to the Texas Department of Transportation, known as TaxDOT, for the state participation in the form of green ribbon funding to pay for a portion of the cost for S H twenty-six from Tennyson Parkway to South John McCain Road and S H one-twenty-one from north of Gateway Drive to connecting road that called the project as stated in Exhibit A. Whereas upon final execution of the agreement, the city council authorizes the commitment, the commitment of local matching funds to the extent required to be funded from available funding in the tax increment finding, financing district fund. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Colleyville, Texas, section one, that the city council authorizes an advanced funding agreement with TaxDOT for the green ribbon funding for the project and authorizes the city manager to execute all documents necessary to complete the transaction. Section two, that the city's portion of the project funding required under the agreement shall come from the TIF fund. Section three, that this resolution shall become effective immediately upon passage, and so it is resolved. All right, Miss Lisa Escobedo, women of all hats.
Yes, sir.
You got it.
So this, again, this resolution is to approve the advanced funding agreement with TaxDOT for the green ribbon projects as mentioned. This is, this resolution is necessary to authorize the commitment of utilizing the TIF for these two projects, and the total received funding for these two projects is eight hundred and eighty-five thousand five hundred and nine dollars in totality. So this is a great benefit for the city. Any questions?
Just, Lisa, just a comment. The amount of the funding, the total project grant is five hundred thousand three hundred and thirty-six dollars, of which the city will be responsible for sixty-one thousand. So it's a substantial, oh, you've got this.
That's amazing.
There you go. So great. That is so awesome that you guys got out there and chased that down, and man, TaxDOT, I I love this story. So TaxDOT gave us some money, I think it was for the transformer or not, for the generator that one time. Was it TaxDOT?
Yeah, the TaxDOT, and they gave us money for the bridge and Jackson, and they gave us money on that.
They said, you know what? You guys actually go out and spend the money and get things done, get it done like immediately. You know what? Here's some more. And then you guys did that. And then they said, here's some more, here's some more. And so we we just appreciate you guys hustling to get it done so that we can get more funding, and boy, that's that helped the city out. That that's just a tip of the hat to you guys and to TaxDOT for helping us out.
Definitely.
It's neat, too. It's taken the landscaping all the way down to the towers and, you know, it's going to connect all that length there from there, beautify it, so it's pretty cool.
Previously grant funds for this section up here, so that's also been done, so it's the entire corridor.
Yes, from Tennyson all the way to Longwood.
Yep, that's so cool.
Yes.
All right.
We've actually got to a point now where we're running out of qualifying areas, and so we've actually thought about, and again, just thinking about whether or not we should apply for funding outside the community on the entrances to the community. And so that's a big question, is whether TaxDOT would even fund it, but it's a question.
Do the bidding for other cities to get their, get their projects done for them. We're so talented.
Help, help make our entrances look better by helping others make their exits look better than us.
Help me help you.
Well, when you have talent like Lisa, you know, that's, why not?
Thank you.
All right, well, any questions for Lisa before I? Okay, thank you so much, Lisa. I am going to open a public hearing. A public hearing is now open. Anybody want to speak? Community impact, you want to speak? All right, girl, all right. I'm going to close the public hearing of vote is, or wait, I need a motion and a second. I almost missed out.
Motion adopt resolution R dash two-five dash five-zero-eight-five.
I'll second.
I got a motion by Councilmember Graves and a motion by Debbie Mayor Pro Tim Richardson? Is that who?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
You said it so fast, I almost thought it was Mark.
Oh, no.
All right, motion passes seven-zero. Good job. Thank you, Lisa. You're, you guys are awesome. All right, so we're going to move to the next one, which is seven B, a resolution reading and public hearing of resolution R dash two-five dash five-zero-eight-six, approving an advanced funding agreement with Texas Department of Transportation for the purpose of maintain, maintenance of railroad pavement markings and signs, authorizing the city manager to execute the agreement and providing an effective date, whereas the city, the city council finds it in the best interest of the city and its citizens to maintain the pavement markings and signs at the railroad crossings located within the city limits and to enter into an advanced funding agreement with Texas Department of Transportation under the terms and conditions provided therein. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Colleyville, Texas, section one, that the city council authorizes the city manager to execute the agreement with TaxDOT for the purpose of maintenance of railroad paving, pavement markings and sign located within this, and signs located within the city of Colleyville. Section two, that at the completion of the project, the city of Colleyville shall receive from TaxDOT at no cost the installed roadway signage and pavement markings that were installed on locally owned roadways and facilities as a part of the project. Section three, that the city of Colleyville agrees to accept and maintain the roadway signage and paving markings to the standards of the city and in compliance with the Texas Mutual on uniform, uniform traffic control devices. Section four, that this resolution shall become effective immediately upon passage, and so it is resolved. Okay.
Okay. So currently, the city maintains the signage and pavement markings at all of the three railroad crossings, which would include Bransford Road, Pleasant Road, and John McCain. So what this, this project is new to us from TaxDOT, and they are projecting to upgrade these markings and signage as necessary. This project probably be in about two to three years, so we just did this, changed out with our markings, and so in another two to three years, it would be about time to to do, to get another upgrade. So this is, the great thing is that TaxDOT will fully fund this, so the city will have no expense in this, and so it will be upgraded again in two to three years, and the city will just continue to maintain these areas.
Okay, and so and after they've done it this one time, then we'll take over from there and do it from there forward?
I'm imagining we'd probably go into another agreement with them for another two to three years.
Okay, okay, cool. All right. Any questions for Miss Lisa? All right, thank you, Miss Lisa. I'm going to open a public hearing. Public hearing is now open. Anybody want to speak? See, nobody wishes to speak. I'll close public hearing, and I'll need a motion and a second. I'll have to make a motion. I wanted to beat you this time, Mark.
Motion to approve resolution R dash two-five dash five-zero. I'll second.
I'm sorry. I said I'd make a.
I was trying to give Tim Rain a chance.
I know.
I did it early on. I got my second out.
And I just said I would make a motion and then.